And welcome to the Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. Please be reminded that these meetings are audio and video recorded. My name is Becky Stanton and I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions with Bari.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Bari Teek. I'm the new student representative to school committee. I was elected to the, through my peers.
Yeah.
I'm named student representative.
Jeff Poe.
Dustine Puma.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Cernaral.
Ryan McMahon.
Danielle Athanas.
Rob Mullin.
Good evening, Joe Messina, School Business Administrator.
We'll rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll seek a motion to approve the March 28th, 2023 executive session minutes, the April 10th, 2023 tri board minutes, the April 11th, 2023 Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, the April 11th, 2023 Executive Session Minutes, the April 25th, 2023 School Committee Meeting Minutes, the April 25th, 2023 Executive Session Minutes, and the May 9th Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, executive session minutes not to be released at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that carries 7-0-0 citizen time. Seeing none? Correspondence, Dr. Flanagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's two items in your drive tonight that I want to bring your attention to. The first is a letter, it's a little dated at this point. I think we received it a couple of weeks ago, but it's a letter from Senator Kennedy advocating for additional reimbursement from the state for all MSBA projects. As you know, we've talked a little bit about this, but Senator Kennedy is requesting that, and it was approved by the Senate, so now it's at the Joint Ways and Means Committee. Right now, we're looking at additional potential of $100 million. It's going to go to offset some of the escalation costs for the 30 MSBA projects that are currently going on throughout the state. I will say that this, this bill is getting a lot of support. It's getting a lot of advocacy around the Commonwealth. I think anyone, or any senator and/or representative who represents a community that's going through a building project recognizes the unforeseen strain this is putting on local budgets. So again, we are one of 30 communities in the MSBA pipeline currently, and I'm hopeful that there, something will come out of this. The other piece of correspondence is a reopen request from Council 93. So that is our custodial maintenance group. So I will be sending an email tomorrow to the Negotiations Subcommittee to look at potential dates over the next couple of weeks where we can try to get together and begin negotiations. Their contract does expire on June 30th, 2023, so we have a little over a month to get it done. Preliminary conversations, they're optimistic that we'll be able to get it done before July 1, which is great. So that is Tony, Ryan, and Jeff will be sending you an email tomorrow to talk about negotiation dates.
Thank you. Personnel, none at this time? And share the success, Nate.
Yeah, so at the elementary school last week, they had their science and art expo. Many talented scientists and artists, they were both very proud to show off all their work. It was very busy, packed house, lots of smiles, laughs, and lots of fun, so that was great. They'd like to, the elementary school would like to thank all the volunteers who came out and helped out during the event, and also a special shout out to Mrs. Maraca. She took part in the planning of the science expo, and then also Mrs. Anderson, who helped label and put up over 1,000 pieces of art that they had on display, which is incredible, so that's awesome. I think I saw some of it the other day when we were in there for pre-prom, it was really cool to see, lots of stuff in there, so. And then also, they have several end of the year events coming up at the elementary school, so just take a look at Mrs. Kavanagh's more for more information on that. At the middle school, MKAS finally coming to an end. They have a couple makeup exams left to go. The planning of the end of year activities for eighth graders, that's well underway. There's a student committee and parent committee both working together on the end of year events for that. And then there's also the middle school band and chorus concert, that was last week. That was a big success, they had great turnout to that. The sports at the middle school wrapping up. They had a lot of great participation this year, a lot of students taking part in that. Student council is planning a great field day for the middle school. It's going to be held on June 15th. And then, last night, Knowledge Bowl team, I was made aware of this by Mr. Paul this morning. They were able to advance to the finals, which are tonight.
Right now.
Yeah, right now, so great job to them, good luck. I was on the Knowledge Bowl team, and that was, that's fun, fun stuff there, so good luck to them. At the high school, I'd like to congratulate Janelle Cody and Masala Patel. They were both recognized at the annual Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association Academic Scholars Luncheon. That's a name. Prom was a great night as well for the high school. THS looks forward to senior awards night, senior week, and graduation coming up. Great job by the TPS band on their spring concert, like I mentioned. Mr. Eaton's in the room, so great job to you as well. And just good luck to spring teams at the high schools as they start to get ready for playoffs and all that. And then, just considering this is my last night, I just wanted to thank all you guys. This has been a great opportunity. I've had a lot of fun with this, I think it's something, it's really awesome that you guys offer this. And that's great. And then also thank you to Mrs. Fairbanks, Mr. Piper. They've all been great, you know, as well. And then, just thank you to everyone here at Tingsboro. It's been, I've been here since daycare, so I've interacted with a lot of different people throughout all the schools, and you know, everyone's just, it's, it's great. So thank you to everyone for that, and like I said, thank you to you guys, but enough from me. This is Bari. Bari is going to be our student representative next year. And if you just want to introduce yourself and talk a little bit about the process, how you got here.
Sure, so my name is Bari Teek. I'm a junior currently here at THS. I was elected to the students first. We had a voting process through a Google form. So the top students from the voting, from the voting were then selected to write an essay, which was reviewed. The best essay got the job, and that's why I'm here today. So, and I look really forward to this opportunity, and thank you.
Welcome, Bari.
Thank you.
We look forward to you joining us. And Nate, thanks.
Long update today. I tried to keep it short, but there's a lot of stuff going on.
I'll seek a motion to take 9B out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that carries 7-0-0.
So Madam Chair, we have Mr. Eaton here tonight to present a great opportunity for our kids and to potentially have an overnight experience in Disney World. So Mr. Eaton, I'm going to let you provide some of the context and details here.
And there's a slide right there. Good evening, everyone. I am here for a blessing for our trip. And this has been in the works for a very long time. Probably at least four or five years, so it was definitely since before COVID, and Dr. Branco and I had discussed making an opportunity like this available to the students. So we're looking to take a band trip to Disney in Florida next March through, March 13th through 17th, so Wednesday through Sunday. Offering it to just generate some new excitement for the program, also give kids an opportunity to build new friendships, strengthen existing ones. It's going to be open to band students in grades seven through 12, so take the seventh through 12 band students. Right now, the anticipated cost per student is $19.99, and that is not $19.99. But mentioning that because we're offering a lot of fundraising opportunities, that was really important to me too, to make it as accessible to any kid that wanted to go. So for example, we just had our recent calendar raffle, and for each $10 ticket that the students sold, $5 would come back to the Music Parents Association account, and another $5 would go directly to that student, a little separate account for that student to offset the cost of the trip. So that'll, that's one opportunity that's already happened. And then we have our mattress fundraiser coming back next year. Anyone buy a mattress? If you need one, everyone out there on television, save the day. It's going to be in October next time, in the fall. And we'll also have some touchless fundraisers that were developed during COVID, so we'll be able to sell some drinkware, socks, anything you can think of, all out of the box ideas, just opportunities for students to make money to put towards the trip. There'll be four payments, September, October, November, and January, set up through a portal that Bob Rogers Travel. His, they just got back to me, I think the portal has just been set up today, which I'll be taking a look at this week. That particular company's been a business since 1981, founded by a band director, so a lot of experience with kind of the details such as moving instruments on airplanes and getting through that. Students have already been accepted to perform in Festival Disney, and they'll also participate in something called soundtrack sessions. They've been accepted to that as well, where they get to work with a Disney artist, a conductor, and work to put music towards animation. So they'll play music towards, you know, I've seen a brief video of it, it looks pretty cool to me. So another great educational experience for students too. The itinerary and tour proposal is labeled in your drive as 9B, so if that's something you want to look at now or later, it's, it is there for you. And just hoping to get a thumbs up, or if I can answer any questions for you, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Mr. Eaton?
When you say the students will be performing in Festival Disney, is that a marching experience?
Not a marching experience.
So is that a stage experience?
It's a separate stage experience.
Like at Disney Springs or something like that?
They had a couple different opportunities, like one of them was in outdoor performance. I think that's where the Disney Springs, I was there once, like 12 years ago with the theater group, and I believe that's the outdoor portion, and the other one was an indoor. So we opted to go for the indoor, and then the kids will get feedback from a group of adjudicators.
Okay.
And they'll work with the kids there.
Nice.
My, my thinking was performing outside, for one, it wouldn't be marching if they were just on the stage in that setting, not knowing the instrumentation we'll have traveling. And also, I think for some of the younger students playing outside, there would be a lot of Disney-esque type of, you know, distractions for them, so.
Any other questions?
That cost covers the transportation of all the instruments?
Yes. So that's something when I talked to my tour contact, part of that was putting in, instead of just the $35, say baggage fee that we anticipate, also putting in extra far transportation of the instruments.
What about insurance on the instruments?
I will check in insurance on instruments, but we will have insurance provided on, for all the students. All the families will be able to, I believe that's included as part of it, but they will have a specific insurance. Part of the thing is with the September payment, we don't put any of the fundraising money towards that, but the parents pay that upfront because it gives them the opportunity to purchase the insurance, which would cover everything, and we want to encourage that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
If I could just make a comment, then I'm in full support of all these trips. I think they're awesome.
Thank you.
You know, my kids came through the school and they did them all, and they're just, it's a great experience for the kids. So thank you for being willing to do this.
Thank you.
I'm happy to see you trying to generate more interest for the music program. I know COVID wasn't kind to the music program, so.
COVID wasn't kind to any music program.
Excited to see more students join.
Just, just for context, is there a minimum threshold number of students that have to go?
So the minimum threshold to participate in Festival Disney in the soundtrack sessions, and that, those are the educational experiences we want, the minimum threshold is 20.
And where are we now? With kids who have expressed interest?
Well, just from what I heard, we should meet the 20. If I look at just a couple families alone with multiple kids that have talked to me and expressed interest, that would cover just two families, might get us six or seven kids right there.
Perfect.
So I anticipate we'll be able to get the 20, but that's why I want to put it out and talk it out more now, so we can, you know, definitely get that ironed out.
Makes sense.
Does it need to be a well-spread out 20? You don't want 20 drummers?
Whatever we have for students, I can make work.
Okay.
I'm not concerned.
Fair enough.
And I am a drummer. I will take no offense.
Ryan, you clearly haven't seen the drum line yet.
Do you call the guy who hangs out the band, the drummer?
Well, I will, I will seek a motion to approve the FY '24 overnight band trip to Orlando, Florida as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that carries 7-0-0. Thanks, Mr. Eaton.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you next Friday.
Yeah, yes.
For Subcommittee updates, we have none at this time.
Correct.
And we can move on to unfinished business. Dr. Flanagan.
Yep, so we'll go up to the beginning of this PowerPoint, slide deck.
I apologize. I think it's time.
Yep. And we're going to stop right there. Mr. Woodlock, we have a true North statement, we're going to start on that. So true North statement, you know, we talk about valuing the people in our community, and I think, you know, tonight I specifically want to address nine employees. Nine employees who have worked for us at one point or another during this school year, who will be celebrating next week, next Tuesday, at a retirement party in Chelmsford. So I just, I just want to hear these numbers. Cheryl Berman, 33-plus years. Gail Berger, 26-plus years. Val Dagley, 16-plus. Betsy McCarthy, 17-plus. Ellen O'Neil, 16-plus. Denise Pantanella, 20-plus years here. Kathy Pollan, 19-plus years. Nora Tompkins, 17. Donna Walker, 18-plus years. 182 years of service to the kids in this community, from these nine individuals who are retiring. We talk about valuing our people, we talk about valuing our kids. To these employees, on behalf of the entire Tingsboro School Community, thank you for your service and your commitment and your professionalism over all these years. The number of students you've impacted and touched and inspired is, I can't even put a number on it. So all great employees, all people that were, that were highly regarded and professional, and I wish them all the best in retirement. Some of us are jealous, so thank you all for your service, very appreciative. That's our true North statement, we're retiring next week. So now we'll move on to the upcoming school committee calendar. This, there are no changes here, I think, I put one in red. There may be a school building committee meeting that needs to be added. I heard from our recent OAC meeting, I'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. So that, that's the upcoming calendar right now. June 6 will be our reorganization meeting, as well as our Subcommittee Requests meeting, so I'll put those out to you as well, and that'll kind of be a wrap up the, the school year, and then we get back at it in August 1, on August 1. So that's the upcoming calendar. So now we can move on to the MSBA update. So a couple, a couple points to talk about here. The first one is, we have begun our onsite OAC meetings, which stands for Owner Architect Contractor Meetings. These primarily were done via Zoom, but now they are actually happening in the trailer out back, so Mr. Woodlock and I get to attend. We got to go beyond the fence last week for the first time, last Thursday, and it was kind of, it was kind of weird. It was kind of surreal, because we've both been here for a long time, and it was just a little bit different to see everything, all the trees down, and the new road and everything. So they have a nice setup back there, but those meetings happen weekly, every Thursday morning at 9 o'clock. Couple things we talked about, graduations coming up on June 2. Because the site right now is primarily a big sand pit, we are working with Fontaine, and we will have access to that construction road for TPS employees who are insured. So that will allow us to park about 40 employee cars on the access road in the back, behind the gate, which will free up spots here. I mean, our big concern is parking, obviously. That'll free up some spots here on campus. Additionally, we reached out to Bhakta Samaj, the temple at the top of the road, and we're going to encourage our seniors to A, get dropped off or carpool, but B, we're going to have our seniors park down there. As you know, after graduation, our seniors go on a grad night adventure. I'm not going to give away where they go, what they do, I think they all know, but they go on a grad night adventure. So we're going to have them leave their cars there, and we'll use our bus and shuttle them up here for the graduation ceremony. So that'll be another 50 or 60 cars, that spots that can be freed up here in the parking lot. So we do have a plan for graduation. I had a meeting today with the Chief and Deputy Chief. We will have details on site, and everyone just said we're going to make it work. So we'll, we'll make the best of it, and it'll be fine. At the end of the day, graduation's going to go off, and it's going to be awesome. So that's the update with the June 2 parking. We do appreciate the legality with Fontaine Brothers.
Dr. Flanagan, before we move on, are people still going to have to walk around this building to get to the field?
This building will be open. Go right down Main Street here.
Okay, so we'll be able to cut right through. Excellent. We're going to have signage, so people know that?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
We'll have staff everywhere as well, because the kids are going to come in here, they gather, and they're at 24. So the kids will still come in here to gather, and this will be visibly open. So that's what June 2 is, so we have a plan for that. June 5, if you can go to the next slide, Mr. Woodlock, for a second, and then we'll go back. June 5, that parking lot right there, that parking lot right there is directly in front of the middle school. June 5, they, Fontaine Brothers asked us if they could commandeer that parking lot to begin some of the underground utility work, primarily sewer lines and water lines. So they need access to that parking lot, and it will take them about a week to really get in there, rip the parking lot up, and then get it put back together. That parking lot is about 44 parking spots. On June 5, we've lost 72 senior parking passes, so we're still going to be completely fine. So we said, yes, go ahead and begin the work, we'll make do without that parking lot. We did talk to them about making sure that we had walking path access for the students to go between the schools, and it will be 100% safe. They will have to cut across that road at some point. They know that pretty much eight to one is the timeframe they have to do it because of the bus route and the drop-off traffic, and then they'll steel plate it until they can actually patch the road. So it'll be about a two-week project to get the lines across, but that just kind of keeps the project moving in the right direction, so that's a good thing. So that'll happen on Monday, June 5, we'll have that parking lot coned off. The next thing to talk to you about is, is really just the site preparation that continues. It's amazing to, to see what's going on out there. If you're a student in the classroom, you're feeling the building shake as the steam rollers are, are out there, and then the excavators, they're doing a lot of work, and it's, it's been highly professional, highly organized, efficient. They do a great job of keeping water on the site to keep the dust down. So absolutely zero complaints with, with where we are and where the project's going right now. And then, as I told you before, continued support for that Senate bill. There is speculation that there's additional funding from a separate pot at the state level. There might be potentially two $100 million pots available or made available to the MSBA to look at reimbursing some districts. As you know, right now, we're at a $4.6 million cost overrun for the project. That's including the $2.8 million, I think it is, that we VE'd or value engineered out of the project already. So we are hopeful that support comes, and whether they calculate that support on the 4.6 or the 7.4, if you count the VE, we don't know where that's going to land. But we're hopeful that more money will be coming to the district and to all these MSBA projects because of the escalation. So that's the MSBA update I have here right now. The other thing I do have in here is, these are the final graphics on the signs. Again, it's a, it's a, the gray is going to be a neutral color, that'll be in the main lobby, in the main area, and then we're going with the, the themes, the seasonal themes throughout the building. So those will be the door signs. These will be graphics displayed in each of the four wings. These will be the wall art, this is the wall art outside the gymnasium, right in the main lobby. Actually, the last piece is new, this is, you haven't seen, this is the final design of what our basketball court will look like, or the gym will look like. So right now, that is lined for basketball full court, basketball half court, and the white lines are two full-size volleyball courts. So we received those graphics probably two days ago. So that's what I have for our MSBA update, before we go to Mr. Woodlock and Teaching Learning. Are there any questions?
Can we get an update at an upcoming meeting about what the forecast looks like as far as the budget? And, you know, if it looks like we're going to continue to have overages or things are settling out?
Yeah, so, yes, we can. I'm just trying to go when it's appropriate. We want to look at when the bid package is, right now, the number hasn't changed. It's not going to change for another month, but when it changes, it's going to change by another 20%.
Okay.
So I think, I think July is when we're really going to know a lot more, so maybe our August 1 meeting might be a good opportunity to kind of wrap our head around it and then have conversations, so we know from August to town meeting in October where we're going to be.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, July is 60%, and then October is 90%.
Exactly. But we'll know exact, we'll know 95% of the buyout before fall town meeting, so we'll have a really good understanding. And, you know, the Senate's supposed to set their budget by July 1, the government's supposed to set their budget by July 1. So we should have, you know, if it's not July 1, hopefully by August or September, we'll have an understanding of what the impact of any of these, these potential bills are.
We wouldn't necessarily know what the MSBA is going to do with that money if they get it though, correct?
I think it's a proportion, or be allotted to specifically reimburse the 30 districts that are overrun right now.
Okay.
But we don't know how.
We don't know what the formula is going to be or what their impact will be.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Great. Teaching and learning.
All right, so I'm excited to tell you a little bit about our professional development that we had last weekend. And just for your information, the entire agenda and slide deck that we utilized is in the backup, if you care to look at it. So creating this, this was, this was a big deal for me, because this was the first time that I actually got to lead professional development here with entire, you know, buildings and campus of, of our staff. So it was a really big deal to me, but it wasn't just me. Putting this together, I worked really closely with our building administrators. The counseling staff did a lot of weighing in on things for me and giving me some feedback, and Sarah Lewenzic was so helpful in creating this. And not only creating it, but they helped, you know, share the load of presenting as well. So it was last Thursday, which would have been a full day, but it ended up being a half-day, so everything got a little condensed, and that had me a little nervous, to be honest with you. So, but it was, it was a refresher on multi-tiered systems of support, which you've heard about kind of throughout the year. Social, emotional learning, and universal design for learning, kind of all tied into one. And we finished the day off, and interspersed within the day too, but really finished the day off with a workshop for our teachers. So it wasn't just about sitting and getting, which is kind of what we preach, we don't want to happen regularly, so it'd be pretty hypocritical if we did that. So not just sit and get, but hear some information, do a lot of talking and sharing with each other. But in the end, we decided we really wanted to take some of the information that we've been hearing all year long and then heard again last Thursday and apply it. How do we apply that? So we got a little creative, and we kind of took a spinoff from, do you remember that television show Minute to Win It?
Yeah.
Little game show? So we did basically 20 minutes to win it. And I gave the teachers, and we broke them up into groups on the Norris Road Campus, and then at Tingsboro Elementary, give them a pretty impossible task, which is take all of these things that we've talked about, these social, emotional learning techniques, universal design for learning, and apply it to a lesson that you haven't seen, and you have 20 minutes to do it, and there's 10 of you. And when you, after 20 minutes, you come back and you have to present. You have two minutes to present. The winner got fabulous cash and prizes, as would be the case. So it sounds impossible, and it, it kind of is impossible in a way, but if you were able to be there when these were presented, you would have been blown away. I certainly was. What our teachers, what our staff, it's not just our teachers, it was paraprofessionals. It was nurses, it was counselors, it was everyone, because we wanted everyone to understand what we're trying to do, and we also wanted everyone to have their own particular lens be a part of that lesson plan. And so the lesson plans were not, you know, teach algebra, social studies. It was, how, how would you teach any group of people to create a traditional American Thanksgiving dinner? Or you could choose, how would you teach someone to drive a car, a teenager to drive a car? And the third was, how would you teach someone how you should plan a trip to Walt Disney World? So they got to choose from either one of those three. And just, I want to just shout out to our staff, what an amazing job they did. They came, and then not only did they present, and they put some stuff together so quickly, but they did it with style. And I think that's part of what makes this such a great place to go to school, this, this district, is because the, the presentations that they did with no preparation were fantastic. So really, just a shout out to our staff for being great participants. I think a lot of us really got a lot of it, I got a ton out of it. The feedback is also included in your slides, so it was, it was very well-received, and I'm looking forward to the next one. So any questions? Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
8B is the Superintendent Evaluation. As you all know, we followed our standard process for Superintendent Evaluation, and just for our many viewers at home, every year, Dr. Flanagan sets goals. We meet regularly as a Subcommittee to review the progress on those goals. Dr. Flanagan provides us updates. He and Mr. Woodlock also provide us updates in every single meeting as to the progress on those goals. And then at the end of the school year, the school committee receives a link where we can go online, evaluate those goals in an anonymous fashion. All of those evaluations are compiled, and the compilation of those seven pieces of feedback creates Dr. Flanagan's evaluation. In addition to that, Dr. Flanagan prepares a self-evaluation to reflect on how he feels he did on his goals, what he feels his strengths were, what he feels his weaknesses were. And together, those two pieces combined create Dr. Flanagan's evaluation package for the year. So that's just the overall process that we follow. This year, Dr. Flanagan had two primary goals. And, you know, the one slide that you see in front of you, it really, it almost doesn't do it justice, but we only have so much time to discuss this tonight. So when we think of goal one, it's the implement. So, when we think of goal one, it's the implementation of an updated strategy for district improvement. So, by June of 2023, which is essentially now, Tingsboro Public Schools will have an updated and implemented revised goals and actions in our SDI. There were many, many sub-points below this that really made this more granular. Those are available to the public if anybody wants to see those. And it was those granular points that we prepared our evaluation on. As a committee, the committee has ranked Dr. Flanagan as exemplary on his goal number one. For goal number two, it was the MSBA school building project. And just to read a little bit more detail on that, by June 2023, the TMS building project will be underway, and all administrative tasks will have been completed and on schedule. Additional information regarding the project will be shared regularly with the school committee and greater community. And I think we all see that, we talk about it every committee here. We've also seen some support as far as how much time Dr. Flanagan spends on this. And just little, even little snippets of his calendar, just, you know, how many phone calls he has or how many meetings he has. Again, this goal had some sub-goals within it, and those sub-goals were rated by the full committee, and the rating was exemplary. We also have an overall rating that we provide for Dr. Flanagan, and that too was exemplary. So, Dr. Flanagan, thank you so much on behalf of the committee. And also, just as, you know, a parent, thank you for everything that you've put in. You're a huge asset to our community, to our school. I can't say enough good about you, so I, I appreciate everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I could just say a few words. Thank you, I'm absolutely humbled by the evaluation, I appreciate it. I want to thank the school committee for your support, for your direction, for you empowering us and allowing us to do our jobs. And we work for you, and, and you allow us to do that. We, we all pull the rope in the same direction, we're all on the same page in terms of where we want to go as a district. And, and this evaluation, though it says superintendent evaluation, you know, that's, thank you, I appreciate it. But it's, it's, it's the, it's the teachers, it's the paraprofessionals, it's the central office staff, it's our building principals, it's everyone in the district that does the hard work. You know, yes, we set the vision, and I'm accountable to that vision and direction. But you just heard about the professional development, you just heard the, the great things that our teachers do every single day in the classroom, where the real hard work is. And, and I'm just indebted to them, and I just, I think you all know that I, I absolutely love being a part of this community, and I love working in the school district. And, you know, it's just, in a, in a year that has been very tough personally, I am thankful for your support and the support of everyone in this district, so, thank you.
I will seek a motion to approve the superintendent evaluation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that carries seven zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to nine A, Dr. Flanagan?
Yes, Madam Chair, as you know, every year, the Tingsboro Public Schools, as we all are part of a Valley Collaborative, you have to appoint a member to the Board of Directors. Historically, in Tingsboro, as well as every other district, the superintendent serves in that Board of Directors and is your representative to the Valley Collaborative. So, this is kind of, formality comes up every year, so we just need a, a motion and a vote. And then you authorize the chair to sign this document that would make me the representative.
Great, so I'll seek a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Flanagan to the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for fiscal twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that carries seven zero zero. I think we already covered nine B with Mr. Eaton, so, Mr. Messina, finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, tonight, there were thirteen bill warrants presented to the committee, I do have them all back approved. As always, in your drive is the list of warrants, accounts, and amounts. Also, your single signer, Mr. Mullin, did come into our offices on May sixteenth and signed two warrants on your behalf. Those two are in the drive, as well as May ninth. Fifteen warrants were signed by Mr. Mullin. And again, those are all in your drive for accounts and amounts. For signing of payroll, two payrolls since we last reviewed it, the payroll of May eighth and yesterday, May twenty-second, again, warrant numbers and amounts are in your drive. Also in your drive is the April 2023 financial package, which is comprised of three reports, your budget at the end of April, the school committee's revolving account balances at the end of April, as well as the student accounts. And I will leave the enrollment to the chair.
Thank you. At TES, we have seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven students. At TMS, we have four-hundred-and-one students. At THS, we have four-hundred-and-thirteen students. We have twenty-five out-of-district students, for a total of one-thousand-six-hundred-and-six students as of May first, 2023. And now, for school committee discussion. Yep?
Nothing at this time, other than just thank you, I'm enjoying this greatly, so, thank you all.
Need all the best to you and your future endeavors, I'm sure I'm sorry I see you around the neighborhood. But, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you on, on here. And Barry, welcome onboard, you know, I'm sure it's gonna be, be great having you as well. Also, thank you, Mr. Eaton, I know, you know, he puts a ton of work into the band at all levels. I know they just had a trip this week that they came in first place out at Six Flags. So, you know, he's, definitely puts a ton of time and work and effort into these kids, and it, it absolutely shows. That's it.
I just want to thank the faculty and staff for giving the seniors a great prom. Sam came home and was talking about it and all happy, and it was a great job. And I know how much work that goes into it, so I just want to say thank you to everyone who had a part in it. Nate, good luck, welcome to the club, and that's it. Mr. Woodlock?
I'd like to just also say thanks to Nate. He's honestly, what a great job you've done, Nate. So, big shoes to fill, Barry, but congratulations to you and the whole class of 2023.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Rob?
Barry, welcome, looking forward to getting to know you over the next year. Nate, wonderful job this past year, thank you so much, best of luck in everything that you do in the future. Want to thank all the administrators, the teachers for a fantastic year. To all the other seniors, hope you enjoy your last few days here in this building. You might not appreciate it as much now, but you definitely will in the future when you think back on it. So, hold on to those memories, it's, it's, it's gonna be a lot of fun the next, the next week. Mr. Flanagan, thank you very much for, again, another wonderful year, and definitely deserved evaluation. And that's all I have tonight.
Danielle?
Barry, welcome, we're a fun group, looking forward to getting to know you. Nate, good luck, I still have one more meeting with you outside of these walls with library left to go. So, I'll see you there.
Forgot about that.
But, good luck at UMass Lowell, you know you're gonna kill it. Excited for Mr. Eaton and those band kids. As a former band kid myself, I know how exciting those trips are to be able to go outside of our little boundary here in town. And so, they're gonna have a lot of fun, it's gonna be a killer experience. I'm excited to hear about it next fall when they get, when they gear up for it. And, Dr. Flanagan, thank you for another wonderful year. Good luck to the seniors, and congratulations to all those retirees. There are several names on that list that have impacted my family directly, not the least of which is Gail Berger, who has taken wonderful care of my son this year. That's all I got.
Good luck to the varsity and softball, baseball teams with the upcoming state tournament. I know Tony has an exchange student this semester, and his student Liz has been a key player for the varsity softball team. We were fortunate enough to have her play JV a few times. What a great kid, hopefully she's enjoying the experience. Welcome, Barry, it'll be a fun year, I hope you're ready for it. Nate, good luck, I'm sure I'll see you around, and good luck to the graduating seniors, have fun.
Nate, nice haircut, kid, it's about that. Good luck to you at UMass Lowell, I believe that's where you're going, so, good luck to you there, Barry, welcome. Dr. Flanagan, everything that was said is a hundred percent accurate. Thank you for everything you do for Tingsboro Public Schools and the community as a whole. To our graduating seniors, have a great week, be smart, think before you act, good luck in college. The only other thing I'd like to mention is Selectman Winastrom, Hillary Winastrom, did not run this year. However, she did serve on this board for several years. Key in both schools, the elementary school back twenty years ago, and our middle school here that's currently going on. She's still the co-chair of the school building committee. But I'd personally like to thank her for everything she's done for Tingsboro Public Schools over the years. As a member of Board of Selectmen, she's a volunteer for voting, she does a lot for this community. So, thank you, Hillary, for everything you've done for Tingsboro. And that is it.
Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Barry, welcome. I'm with Nate, I'll see you around the next couple of weeks. And, and I will, and that's the best part of this time of year, right, all these, all these events. I know the past couple of weeks, we had Tammy Awards where our theater kids did well, we had the Band Do Well out at, help me with the name.
Six Flags?
Thank you, Six Flags. Knowledge Bowl is hopefully doing okay right now, I'm waiting for some updates to come through on my phone. This is a time of year where, where we kind of reap the benefits of our job. This is where we get to celebrate our kids, and that's what it's all about. So, thrilled for, for all the events that are upcoming, there'll be a ton of them, we'll, we'll be all over the place, but it, it's what it's about. I think you don't get an education and not get a little sentimental in, in June because of the journey that, that, that got you there. So, so I look forward to that next couple of months, or the next couple of weeks, excuse me. Thank you again to the committee for the review, and just thank you to all the employees in Tingsboro Public School System for your support and, and just a, a great year.
I also want to thank the retirees, that was quite the list of retirees, so congratulations and thank you to the retirees. You've impacted so many across the whole community, and, you know, thank you doesn't feel like enough. Barry, welcome again, you're in for a good time with us, Nate can tell you that we can be fun when the lights off. Congratulations to our seniors, Nate, we'll miss you next year, but I'm sure Barry's got this under control. And congratulations. And with that, we have no need for executive session, so I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that carries seven zero zero, we're adjourned.